Welcome to the Thursday, November 13th, 2014, School Committee Meeting. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please have a seat. This time, I'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. I'd like to begin tonight by thanking the mayor, in particular, and the school committee in general, for their leadership during what's been a trying few weeks for the school department. We've lost a few children to some tragic accidents, and your presence and comfort has been noted, not just by the families that have been involved, but by the teachers and administrators. So I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as all the school committee members who are around to support everyone during this tough time. So thank you for that. On lighter note, we're pleased to bring up some students from the high school who have achieved a certificate of academic excellence. As an educational leader in each community, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has designed an award for academic excellence. These awards are given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school careers. The criteria are as follows: three-year commutative GPA, rank in class, personal selection by the superintendent, and being among the top 5% of the school community. This program has intentionally been designed to make these presentations at the beginning of the senior year for the students selected. This will allow for the inclusion of this unique citation in his or her credential package and counselor recommendation as they go on to college or further study. As I said, the numbers are quite restrictive, and we're pleased to announce that we have four winners, and I'm hoping the mayor and the school committee will hand out these awards today. Anna Karina Akila from BMF. Jan Kelly Villa, also from BMF. Jarenell Gomez from PFA. And Gemmalette Valdez from HHS. If the committee could come down and take photos with the recipients, that would be great. Actually, if we get the school committee, maybe stand behind them, because it's kind of too wide. You girls step ahead, step forward a little bit. Can be down the front with them. Next, we got a couple, and one more. Great, thank you. We'd also like to offer a round of applause for the families who have supported their children in the efforts. We will see you at graduation, congratulations. Okay, moving on to updates. I have recently met with the high school faculty and asked them what we can do to reimagine the high school experience in the 21st century for our students, what can we do to make the school better. As you know, the high school has made gains over the last few years, but I think we have more work to do. There are some people who believe that the high school can be transformed by bringing in outside organizations or EMOs. We actually do not believe that. We think the people inside can help us fix this problem. I have charged Headmaster Fiatto with coming up with a plan, working with teachers and students, as well as families, and hopefully the school committee, to come up with a plan in the next month or so to improve things at the high school. Again, the trajectory for the high school over the last several years has been positive, but we think we can make even more gains by looking at some areas where we can do better. I don't know if there's any questions about that. What I would say is, I did talk to all faculty about a week and a half ago. I also met with a student advisory council, and this will be ongoing. I would encourage if school committee members would like to go meet with a student advisory council, that you could more than welcome to join me on that trip, and/or we could find a time when folks could talk to teachers and/or Mr. Fiatto. I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Mariano.
Superintendent, what is the timeline?
You know, I would like to have a working plan in place sometime before January, so it's, you know, within the next six to eight weeks, I guess, is probably the timeline. I believe, as I said, that while some people feel that a more intensive outside intervention is required, I do not believe that. I spoke to the teachers at some length and told them, this is not a situation where there will be any layoffs, this is not what we're talking about, we're just trying to figure out what we can do for a 21st century educational experience for our kids that could make the high school, which has been improving, that much better.
Just as a follow-up to that, I know that the same time they're doing the accreditation process, these things are going to overlap, you think they're going to enhance one another, or is it going to be an issue?
Yeah, it's kind of tied into the accreditation process, because there has to be a self-study that's done before the accreditation process happens. We've asked kind of an outside group as well to come and look at the school, and so we're just trying to gather a lot of data to make sure that we're on the right trajectory. Now, the accreditation has been scheduled in the coming year, however, we may elect, depending on what Headmaster Fiatto decides, to postpone that by a year or so, in order to get some different things in place.
I'm just reading the handout that you gave to the faculty, I know that we all got a copy of that. It looks like it's pretty structured. I guess I would just add my voice of support to the headmaster and to the staff. Anything you guys need from us, just let us know. I would, you know, even though we did say there wouldn't be any layoffs, but I would encourage a vigorous review of staff, both in the classroom and outside the classroom, to make sure that we're on track. I know when you first got here, you guys went through overall by the whole district, and that's actually, you'd laid out a pretty good framework. So even using that framework that you used at the beginning, evaluating, supporting, training, then reevaluating, I thought that was really, really good. So I would encourage that to happen here at this situation as well.
So I would say that, as you mentioned, we did go through a review process in the first year of receivership. We are not going to take a similar tact from a central office level, however, principals being principals have to go through the regular evaluation process continually. And that's where we're hoping to continue professionally developing our staff and making folks better, and if there are a few hard choices to make, that's an individual principal's decision, which I typically do not get involved in.
Great. Anybody else have any questions?
Yes.
The high school?
For the, thank you. The student advisory council, when will those meetings be?
So we're going to have to get you the next date. We had one last week, I think we're going to, the student advisors were quite forthcoming in what they'd like to see be improved at the high school, and I think we're going to have one probably in the next two weeks. We can get that to you, that date. I think Mr. Fiatto is here, maybe?
Yes, sir.
We can get that to you by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Can you send it to everybody?
Yes, I'll send it to the entire school committee.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Ortiz.
Two things. With the previous advisory meeting already happening, can we have minutes on that, just to kind of see?
I think we have them somewhere for you, or at least...
Yeah, if we could have minutes on that, just so that we know what the students actually shared before we meet with them for the first time, but it's going to be their second time.
We may actually be able to get that to you tonight before the end of this meeting.
Okay.
So I know that, I don't know if they're in minute form, but I know a lot of the quotes were taken down by the kids, so...
Okay, and secondly, you're saying the development of a 21st century educational experience. Are we then intending, in six to eight weeks, to define what that means?
Well, I think that's, that definition is going to be ongoing, probably in perpetuity. But I think we, as a team, and at the high school in particular, they are beginning the process of identifying areas where they think they can do better and improve, and areas where they want to go.
In order to meet a standard or a definition that already exists?
Well, I, you know, I'm not sure anyone has a great definition for what exists right now.
Okay.
You know, and that's why I think the best answers are actually inside the faculty and the teachers. And if you see, we've laid out, I think, eight different times or 10 different times where they can come and offer input and support. What I would say, overall, what I see across the district and in the educational landscape is, I think, overall, we need to do a better job of being more structured with our ninth and 10th graders, and as kids get into 11th and 12th grade, change from the structure to teaching kids to be self-advocates for their own learning, really being more involved in like internships. And there's some schools like HHS, which is doing something with Northern Essex Community College, where they're getting kids kind of real-world experience, getting them early college credit. These kind of things are ideas that I think can be adopted across the campus and not just at any one particular school.
So then in turn, we're developing continuity?
Yeah, well, we're going to see. I mean, as I said, I've charged...
The intent?
Yeah, I think the, we have the benefit of having a system where we have kind of small schools, and we have, we also want to have a big united campus.
Right.
So what exactly that looks like, we're going to let Mr. Fiatto kind of guide us on that, but I think we have the opportunity to make it the best of both worlds if we do it well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes, Superintendent Riley. As far as the student advisory board, I know that in previous time, and I'm not sure if it's still like in the laws, we had a position open where there'd be a student advisory board member that would sit in these meetings. Would you be open to something like that?
Yeah, I think we talked a little bit about that at the last meeting, Mr. Mayor. Can you refresh my memory?
I knew that was going to get on the agenda at some point, but I believe the intent was to actually just have one sit based on whatever the previous, I think somebody actually went and got minutes, right? I think I saw minutes on that.
I think you're right.
We just have to put it on the agenda, take a vote on it.
So we can put it on the December meeting, and then...
Yeah, so we can make sure we do it all right.
Vote on it and do it all the right way. And then, you know, I'll have to look at the process for how they're selected, if that's just a headmaster appointment or how that works.
Yeah, I think in the, if I remember from previous years, in the rulebook, it would just be that the high school would have its own process.
Yeah.
Like sometimes they would have it be elected, or it could, you know, even be appointed, though I'm sure that, you know, an election system might be, you know, more meaningful towards a student.
Well, I'll rely on this committee for what they feel is best to provide us with a great student rep, but, you know, I think it's something we can discuss in December. I think, you know, I talked to the students, I think on the same day I talked to the teachers, because I think it's really important to hear the kids' voices. And I talked to a group of students, some of whom were freshmen, some of whom were seniors, and it's just very interesting, the different perspectives they bring, and I think we need to listen to our kids, you know, as much as we listen to our teachers and principals.
The thing that makes me excited about this is that, having seen this process going on a bunch of times, that I was really concerned about the connection of this high school leadership with the community, and knowing that Mr. Fiatto is the headmaster and Lawrence High School alum, and, you know, raised here in the city, I feel like there's, this is the right, that's going to be a great path to go down, so. Where I'm, I think the bar's raised, because that connection's there. Before, it used to be, you know, principals had been hired from outside the community, so it's great to have that. Thanks.
So we'll be updating you, obviously, as, in the coming meetings, but I just wanted to make sure that folks had that on their radar screen, and if they wish to participate, we'd love to have your input. I turn now to the City of Lawrence School Department domestic violence leave policy. VDA became effective on August 14th of 2014. For most employers, VDA entitles eligible employees 15 days of unpaid leave in any 12-month cycle if they or a family member are victims of abusive behavior. The City of Lawrence School Department elects to use a fixed 12-month schedule from July 1 to June 30th. This is just informational, but if you look into your packet, you'll see there's an actual application form if folks need assistance from us that they can fill out in order to take this leave. This committee had asked for kind of an update on our bargaining and where we...
Can I just stop, real quick, Superintendent, do you have the signature sheet in here, because you want us to sign that as well, or? Because mine is on file, but I don't know if the rest of the school committee has to sign it.
I'm going to have to get back to you on that, I'm not sure what the regs say on that, but...
I think you should.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
No worries. Sorry about that.
No, no worries.
Mine's on file.
We appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Moving to the bargaining agreements, there's been, you guys have asked for kind of status, you know, we have settled with the teachers, the teachers are done, the nurses are done. You'll see a sheet that says, it lists the different bargaining unit and kind of tells you in process. The LTS BBEs are in progress, the paras, we're kind of awaiting AFT word, the clerks also awaiting AFT word, the administration, Lawrence Administrators Association, it's December 5th will be that meeting, safety, school safety officers are awaiting ratification of theirs, the cafeteria folks are in progress, the custodians are in progress, and the tech folks are awaiting some word from the SEIU, which as you know is a different union than the AFT. So we are moving along aggressively on settling all our contracts. Typically, the way this works is the teachers go first in school districts, and then the other unit, bargaining units line up behind them. We have seen that pattern continue here, and we are anxious to make sure that we have all agreements in place as soon as possible. And I could bring folks up to speak about that, Seth or someone could come up if folks need more information.
Everybody have any questions? Thanks.
Okay. Moving along, we were asked to provide information on enrichment partners. This also should be in your packet that you have. As you can see, we work with many different outside organizations. Many of these folks were here prior to receivership, but also, many folks have also come on aboard new, mostly because of the expanded learning time opportunities in the K-8 space. So when you talk about the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA, their programs, which traditionally have been dark during the day, are now being used by our students. So if you go to the Y, you'll see our kids swimming or playing in their amazing music studio. The Boys and Girls Club has many activities for our kids, and those spaces that had been dark during the day are now really being used by our kids in an effort to give all of our kids high-quality enrichment opportunities. Fundamentally, I think what we're trying to do here in our longer day is to improve the academic performance of our children, but also provide the same enrichment opportunities that suburban kids take for granted, that our kids don't always have access to. And we think if we do that, we're going to get better outcomes for our kids, and they can do just as well, if not better, than anybody in the state. So it's kind of fun, if you guys ever want to go to the Boys and Girls Club to watch, the kids are really excited about it. And, you know, I think in a time when testing has taken over so much of education, I think folks have forgotten that children actually need to run and play and be excited, and in Lawrence, we're not forgetting this, and we think that's actually incredibly important to their development. So just information on that, I don't know if folks have questions about particular partners, but if I can answer them, I certainly will, or we have staff here who knows more about some of these partners than even I do.
Mr. Mariano?
Yes, so my question was around BU Dental School, I was just interested how they were partnered with us. And then, secondary question, I remember a few years ago, you initiated a program to bring sort of like, like cleanings to a certain school. I don't remember the details, but I was also interested to know like how that turned out, maybe not for this meeting, but for the next.
So both BU and Polish Dental work with us to provide free services for our kids. They do cleanings, they do assessments, and if a child is found to have decay or whatever, they kind of provide a referral to an appropriate doctor. And I think we took some flak for this, even though it wasn't costing the district anything at the time, because people felt like, well, kids shouldn't be getting free dental experiences. But as an educator who's seen the data on how much time students miss from both dental and medical appointments, I promise you that tackling this problem early, teaching kids the proper way to brush their teeth, how to floss, and these things at the younger age will actually pay dividends down the line. And it may sound a little crazy, perhaps, but it's something that I think I believe in. I think, you know, in order to really effectively deliver instruction, we need to make sure that our kids are ready to learn. And so kids need to have food in their bellies. I was just at the Eos Foundation event with Congresswoman Songus at the Hennessy School the other day about their breakfast program. Our kids need to make sure they have their medical issues straightened out, their teeth have to be straightened out, so that they are in school learning. And, you know, I guess I'd ask Pat Mariano to speak about this, as a principal who may have, who may feel my pain in some of this stuff, but I think if we can sort out a lot of these issues ahead of time, it really maximizes the amount of learning time our kids get during the day.
Mr. Mariano stows the floor?
No, that's fine, I give it to Pat.
No, just to piggyback on what the superintendent said, my, one of the worst challenges of being a principal was having children come in at 11 o'clock in the morning after a braces appointment or a dental cleaning. It seemed like the local dentist always had their appointments in the morning, and, you know, as much as you'd say to the parents, try to get an afternoon appointment, it was always a morning appointment, and kids were out all the time. So I applaud you, Superintendent, for even trying to do something like that within the district.
Just a follow-up to that.
So what schools are they in now?
We'll get you the list. It's primarily the early childhood centers, I think the Hennessy, the Lawler...
Could we get something back from them, just telling us, you know, what their response has been so far?
Yeah, I think that would be easy to do and be great. I might actually, if folks want to go see it kind of in action, it's kind of fun to see. No? Fair enough. All right, maybe it's not as fun as I think.
I'm all set with the dentist.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Blaschford?
Thank you. So these are, are these just purely during the school year programs, or does this include summer programs and winter break and so on?
Yeah, I think it's anytime they're working with Lawrence Public Schools, so that includes summer, that includes breaks, you know, you see folks here that you guys know from beyond soccer to gear up and the boating program, you know, which is not happening in the winter, but happening more in the spring and summer. So, yeah, we're, the Lawrence Public Schools, because we have the school calendar and then we have summer opportunities, we're kind of a 12-month organization, so kids are here throughout.
And as for the medical dental aspect of it, is any of that going on during the summer? Because while I agree that it's great to get that out of the way early, is it happening for like kids who can't get it early on, so like the elementary school or middle school kids that haven't got it?
The partners have asked more for early fall, because it's, we have the full captive audience of all the children, whereas in the summer, we don't service all the children. Sometimes they go to camps, and they're serviced by different providers. But I think strategically, it makes some sense to try to get some of this work done over the summer, again, to further reduce the amount of time lost on instruction.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Rodriguez?
I'm just wondering, I'm actually happy to see this big list of partners, but I is, I'm wondering, like, I would like to see, like, what they do actually for the kids. I know we're talking about dentals and stuff, but there is all their names that I'm not familiar with, that I would like to kind of like, you know, know a little more of what they provide, what type of service they're providing to...
Would it be helpful if we got you a blurb with the particular schools they work with, and what are generally what they do, like a paragraph for each of those?
Like in general, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the docket, Mr. Mayor, is the Family Resource Center. I think folks know, originally, we're moving in November. That has been rescheduled to mid-December, we've had some slight procurement issues, but we do anticipate to be fully moved in mid-December. We have a ribbon-cutting event for the Family Resource Center in January, and more information on that will be forthcoming. As some of you know, we got, some of this is being paid for by grant monies that the mayor and I received from the Federal Reserve at the beginning of the year, which is helpful. But we will be moving that program to Island Street, and the rest of the central office will be going to the old North Common Building, some of the open classrooms there. So we will get you kind of the configuration, so everybody knows where everybody is. We'll be, we're in the process of printing out new staff materials, so people can be found, and extensions can be made, but we will be vacating this building, and I just want to make sure that people are aware of that, that in January, by January, we will be gone.
Any questions? Thanks.
Okay. Moving right along, any final questions from MCAS 2014? I think our data person got sick, but I can speak to most of the MCAS questions if, I don't know if folks have, for those who, just a brief wrap-up, I think last year, we were the most improved district in Massachusetts. This year, we're again one of the most improved districts in Massachusetts, really strong gains. This year, particularly in English Language Arts, our growth went from 47 to 52, our math stayed high at 57, which I think was the highest or second highest of all gateway cities. We have moved out of the bottom 10% of all school districts in Massachusetts, which has implications vis-à-vis charters and other things like that. And so I think it's a real testament to the hard work of the teachers inside this district, the extra time they've put in, the effort of the kids and the families, and the school committee to, you know, to kind of celebrate what's happened here in the last few years, and to recognize that I think our best days are ahead of us, there is, our children are capable of amazing things, and I think a lot of people were surprised that our children have moved out of the bottom 10%, based on the state's calculation for that. I was not. I think our kids can actually do much better right now, so we anticipate great things for them in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ortiz?
I just have a quick question. In regards to the MCAS, when schools reach Level 1, and it's part and parcel of the way my brain thinks, when they're, when they get to Level 1, is there opportunity for the following year for them to add a component for language?
Tell me more, like a foreign language?
Yeah, like a foreign language. So where, where we're now, not to say that we don't continue to concentrate on our ELA and our math, but you know how we're doubling up, and I can speak to how my kids have been taught these past, whatever, how many years they're in school, yes, I see them back there, they're waving at me. They, now, as they're entering into or growing out of middle school and going on to high school, then this is their first experience at language, will there be opportunity, or is there any thought, when schools get to a Level 1 status, to add that lang, that language component to foreign language, seeing as that's part of being a 21st century education?
Absolutely. So let me speak to that on a few levels. One, perhaps most disappointingly, you know, there is no additional funding that comes with being a Level 1 school, which is too bad, because I think it should be a real recognition of the schools that have met, gotten to that status. We have six in this city, and that's a pretty significant accomplishment compared to other towns in the Commonwealth. But what I've kind of said to the principals is, because we've decentralized the schools to some extent, we want the principals at the building level to make those kind of decisions. My hope is that if you became Level 1, you kind of stay Level 1 for a few years, and then you start branching out and deciding what's best for your community. So I would say, work with your principal and have these discussions, because I think a lot of principals are kind of looking to move in that direction, and not just with foreign language, but it could be with robotics, it could be with, you know, debate league, the different things that kids, that will be beneficial for kids and that principals want to explore with their children when they're at that level.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Blaschford?
Thank you. When it comes to science testing and history testing and all that, in addition to the English and math, has there any been any changes on that for requirement of graduation, especially for the high school students?
So the science testing was newly adopted as a graduation requirement a few years ago, so students now have to pass the English, math, and science. History has been kind of the forgotten subject area, which is very unfortunate. As a principal, many years ago, I was always waiting for the history test to come out, and they were, it was kind of promised and promised, and for whatever reason, it's never happened. You know, I do not speak for the state here, I just speak for me personally when I say I think that history has been given short shrift in the Commonwealth, in particular United States history, and that it's something that I would like to see kids have more exposure to. And in many districts, history has been limited by the need to focus so much on English and math, and I think that's doing a disservice to our children, not to be proselytizing.
In addition to the MCAS next year, we're going to be... In addition to the MCAS, next year, we're going to be continuing with the MCAS going as opposed to going to Park, correct?
This year, we're staying with the MCAS exam. After speaking to the principals, that kind of seemed to be the sentiment. We are taking a lot of information about Park. We are moving our standards that way, but we right now think that it's in our best interest for continuity's sake. That is, we've only been here for a few years. We want to keep the same test to make sure that our kids are on the right path. And then, you know, when or if the state does officially adopt Park, then we will make that, that movement that way. And right now, I think it's 55% of the districts are going Park and 45 are doing MCAS or vice-versa, but it's about 50/50.
And in that vein, how far away would we be from being able to do it, since it is a computer-based test? How, how off would we be essentially if we switched to it tomorrow?
So, if it was solely, if the only option available was a computer-based test, I think we would struggle, and I think we're going to have to be using our funding, a chunk of our funding in the coming years to really get our technology up to speed. This, by the way, is a problem not germane to Lawrence, but across the entire Commonwealth. However, the Park test right now is provided in pencil and paper format and supposedly will be for the next few years, so there is time just to take the pen and paper test and not use the technology. But it's something that bears watching across the state.
The concern, I guess I would have, is that, how, what's that chunk? Like, how much of that needs to be invested, short-term, long-term? Because we do have aging computers, as you know, once a computer's out for a year, it's old, so.
Yeah. Yeah, the problem with technology is it becomes obsolete very, very quickly. And so, we're, I wish Long was here, we would kind of have him come up and, and tell you about some of the exploration we've done. And I'm looking for a way to get technology that is resistant to that kind of obsolescence, that is something simple, standardized, maybe it's a Chromebook, maybe it's something else, I don't know, where kids can get really familiar with it, so that the technology is not an impediment to taking the test, but kids are familiar enough with it. Now, let me be clear. I heard, I was at a conference maybe two years ago, when I heard something pretty remarkable, and, and the guy said that children are, we as adults are digital immigrants, and children are digital natives. And I think we find that in the school system today, where our children are actually much more savvy at technology than we are. Maybe there's a few members on this committee who are as savvy as the children and are younger, but for some of us older folks, I think that is definitely the case. So, we've got to find a product that is going to be really good for them, but also is not going to go the way of the dodo bird within a year, so then we got a problem, right? Because the technology is constantly changing by leaps and bounds.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mariano, then Ms. Ortiz?
Thank you.
Yes, just, at one point, you said whether the state will go down, you know, whether the state will decide that. So, when you say the state, like, who do you mean? Like, the commissioner, like the board?
On what? If the full implementation of Park?
Right. Because I mean, I, I thought it was a school committee across the state where voting on whether they were going to do it or not.
Yeah, I heard there was, one school committee was trying to go rogue on the whole thing, and I'm not sure if that's doable or exactly what the details of that are. I believe the board of-
We're talking about DESI?
DESI, the DESI Board, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Board is the final judge on how this happens, where it happens. Obviously, we have a new administration in, so, you know, things could change, timelines could change. I am not privy to any of that information. What I can tell you is the district, I think it's in our best interest, for the sake of continuity, to stay with MCAS for this year and then pivot, if needed, depending on the timeline and choices that are made at levels above mine.
Follow-up. So, one of the things that I found interesting with Park is I think that it helps solve some of the issues that we're having now, whereas kids are, they're so used to taking the MCAS, that when they take the entrance exam, whether it's from Northern Essex or even UMass, they end up scoring lower than what they should be, even though they're getting A's and B's. So, we have a lot of our students, I don't know if, you know, folks in this committee know about this, but there's a lot of students that, I don't know the percentage, but that end up going to Northern Essex, and they might get into remedial English, remedial math. So, if they don't go into the guidance class or and sort of push for themselves, they might be in that, a year's worth of remedial. So, that year is just gone. And I think one of the reasons is, I mean, they might be bad test, test takers, but one of the reasons is that they're so focused on the MCAS that it's hard for them to take another different type of test. And my belief is, and I don't know too much about Park, is that that kind of helps alleviate that situation, or I might be completely off.
It's more standard than the, than MCAS is?
Yeah, well, and it's also, I think from my understanding, is that they're, it's sort of connected to the state colleges or something.
So, I'm just not sure. What I would say is, I believe that the MCAS test is probably the most rigorous in the nation. Each individual state gets to initiate their own test. My brother, for instance, lives in a southern state where 90% of the kids, based on their state's test, are considered proficient or advanced. But I guarantee you, if they came up to Massachusetts, they wouldn't be advanced or proficient on this test, that percentage. So, if folks do go to this Common Core and the Park where, you know, all the different states are taking the same test, we're going to actually get to see how we do compared to other kids in other states. Now, I am, I, I am not sure if this different kind of test will enable our students to do better on the Accuplacer, which is the test kids take when they get into, you know, a community college, to kind of sort out if they're ready for college-level work, or if they have to go back and do three semesters of math or what have you. What I can tell you is the new test has more critical thinking to it. It asks you to kind of compare and contrast different documents and synthesize information. But I'm not sure that that is actually going to help you do better on the Accuplacer test in itself. I think only time's going to be able to, to say if that's the case. I mean, that would be great if it was true, I just don't know.
Right. I don't know too much about this myself, but I was speaking with folks in Northern Essex, and my understanding was that it took, I could be completely wrong, misunderstood the conversation, but I thought it took the place of the Accuplacer.
Oh, great.
So, that they would use that instead of giving them a separate test.
Well, that sounds wonderful to me.
Use the MCAS results?
Use the, the Park.
The Park.
Okay, gotcha. Ms. Ortiz, and then Mr. Rodriguez.
So, with this being, I guess, lack of federal mandate for Park, for us to be able to do that on computers, where's the money? Why can't we get money, since they're making us do it? Give me computers.
You'd be surprised that we got a mandate without money?
Unfunded mandate?
Where's money?
We'd make the case. We would make the case.
I mean, that's what I would make, that's the case I'm making. If I, if I'm required to do this, then I need the tools to do it with.
I would say I am not in disagreement with you.
So, just let me know where I need to be. I'll take care of that. And secondly, speaking of the Accuplacer test, is there potential for our seniors to take that test in high school to gauge where they're at?
So, we're working with Lane Glenn at Northern Essex right now to kind of work on just such a thing, kind of an early college, high school, where kids, our teachers will go to Northern Essex to teach the kids, but then the Northern Essex people will come to the high school campus and teach, and I think again at AGHS, you're seeing some of that. But I, that is an area where I think we would definitely like to go. What I'm seeing across the state is that our kids are being burdened with four-year college tuitions, which are really exorbitant and hard for our kids to kind of get out of debt after they do that. You look at a program like Northern Essex, and there's some people that decry the community college system. I would argue that Northern Essex is probably the shining star-
Absolutely.
-of the community college system, and to go there at a substantially reduced rate, and they have a program where if you do well, you, you know, those two years count, and then you get, you get to go automatically to UMass Lowell as a junior-
Exactly.
...and save yourself huge amounts of tuition money. That's a program that we can get behind in Lawrence that I would like to see our kids do. And if you remember, at graduation, the mayor taped the applications to that institution underneath all the chairs, because I think with the huge footprint they're putting in downtown Lawrence, the investment they're making, this is for our kids. And so, we would be crazy not to embrace these folks and the programs that they have.
Well, that's what I'm, I was thinking, that that kind of partnership would gauge where they're at, because to, to speak to Mr. Mariano's point, statistically, our children are burning through their Pell Grants-
Yeah.
...on remedial classes. And so, that's also where their loans come in earlier or come in more, because they're spending that first year or maybe two, working on what is considered to be college standard at a cost. So, if we can get in there before it costs them anything, and October, November, once the regular college students are already admitted, and have our kids take this test to just see, hey, this is where you're at, and this is what we're working toward to-
And I think, you know, just based on the discussion we had earlier about the high school, I think this is a direction that the administration there is going. You know, I think we can do a better job of setting our kids up for success as they leave the high school, and making sure that they're not being set up for a financial burden that many kids across cities take on and then sometimes drown in.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, I have two points. Going back to the MCAS, are there is any specific data we have that is required for us to make the transfer to Park, or is just, there's a decision that is going to be made in the district?
So, this year, the district was able to decide to do, whether we would do Park or MCAS. We chose to stay with MCAS because we wanted another year of data to kind of assess how we're doing as a district. We are told that neck, the following year, all districts have to do Park. Now, I do not know if that changes with the new governor. I do not know how that plays out, but I think the intention right now from DESI is that all districts in Massachusetts the following year will adopt the Park assessment system.
Okay. And talking, going back to the Northern Essex Community College, great school, I love what they're doing here in Lawrence, but I mean, are we forcing our kids to only apply to Northern Essex Community College?
No.
Or is just all the opportunity that we have to let them see all the, all the colleges around?
I think if you go to the high school, you'll see that kids have different opportunities to go visit different schools. I mean, you guys remember saying, we, we sent kids to Princeton last year, Columbia, BC. We send kids to a lot of places. One of the things we haven't done, I think we've done a really good job of promoting those four-year schools. I don't think we've done as good a job of promoting the two-year university option, particularly as a strategic way to pay for your college, and I think that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about doing away with, you know, kids going to the four-year schools at all, especially if, you know, they're ready to go and that's, you know, that's where they, what they want to do. But I think other kids might find value in going to the community college first, really getting kind of college under their belt a little bit, and then moving on to a four-year institution if they so choose.
Yeah. My question is raised because, as a follow-up, specifically last night, I get a, I get a phone call from someone telling me that somehow it making scenes, like, we only promoting Northern Essex Community College in Minnesota, and that's very sad if that's the case. I know, I talked to the head, head of the school, and, and we have that conversation, and I know for sure that that's not the case, but I mean, they feel that way, because the council was somehow, they make a scene, like, this is the choice to go, or maybe the only choice they might have, and, and, and that's kind of like, not a good thing.
Well, we can be sure to address that if that's happening in isolated pockets, but I, as, as I think you said, you talked to the headmaster, and that is not our intention.
I definitely know that's not, that's not the case, but I mean, I know it.
Our job is to try to place the kid where he's going to be most successful, and kids are on a spectrum, and so different kids will do well in different places, and we're just trying to make sure that we've got the right fit for each kid.
Mr. Mayor? Do we know, I just had a quick question. Do we know what the percent of kids that went to four-year colleges were for last class?
Mr. Fiatto, do you have that? Is he still here?
How you doing?
Do you want to come up?
How's everyone doing tonight?
How you doing?
How are you?
Good evening.
Mr. Headmaster?
I don't have the statistics in front of us. We do have it back at the high school, and I can provide that information, break it down by two- and four-year schools, generally students who attended, who had indicated they would attend college, and then break that down by two- and four-year schools.
The reason why I asked the four-year question is because I'm not, you know, I'm not worried about the kids that are even applying for the two-year colleges out of the gate and getting to Northern Essex. There's a bunch of kids that don't apply to any colleges because of, because of money, because of, or don't, or don't find themselves or back into a, a two-year college afterwards, when they find themselves kind of with no direction afterwards. That's the one that I fear the most, and that we, we definitely want to make, give them the safety net. I think about the class I graduated with, the kids that went to Harvard, the kids that went to Tufts and, and Northeastern, UMass, they're, they self-select. Those kids are going to end up where they're going with it because it's personal drive or because of family and all those. I worry about that group of kids that are not at the very bottom and not in the very middle and not, but that are in that space where there's so many of them and, and giving them an option. So, it may appear that you're, you're pushing that, but the reality is, you're just given this option that's not, has not been given. I don't know if you want to say something like this?
No, I, I wanted to add that we do have a present, Northern Essex now has a presence on the Lawrence High School campus. I think one, definitely one day a week where they're in the school all day long, reaching out to our students, and what we found is that there are several, many students who apply to Northern Essex, but for some reason, they failed to attend, and there's a breakdown somewhere, whether it's through financial aid, whether it's through, as Mr. Mariano might have referred to the developmental courses that they have to take, and they didn't realize that they had to take a developmental course, and there's a breakdown somewhere. So, we want to make sure that from junior year through senior year, if, if they do decide to go to Northern Essex or any other school, they understand the entire process. It's a, the college application process, as we all know, is a very rigorous process, and there's, there's many steps along the way, and our students require some assistance in making sure that they not only get accepted, but make it through their first year. Sometimes the first year is very deceiving, because they may receive a first-year scholarship or some financial aid that they didn't anticipate having to refund their second year. And then, when they get that bill, they come back to the high school and say, we say, how are you doing? You know, you're supposed to be at this four-year school, and they say, oh, I have to go reconsider my options, because my financial aid didn't go through, I forgot, I didn't fill this paperwork out, I didn't submit this form. I did it my fresh, my, my first year in college, but something broke down along the way. So, we're looking at a variety of things, including persistence, four-year persistence. We may have some, what appears to be some good data of high school graduates going to college, but I'm wondering how we can follow up with our, and we will continue to look at this, how we continue with students who get accepted, and we want to see students completing their four years of college, or in five years, and get that degree and come back and show us that they could be successful.
That was my very question.
Well, just the, just a piece of that is that, we know that it's rigorous, but it's also, sometimes it's done by themselves, because parents are either by language or cultural barriers, or even just not being around. Mr. Mariano?
Yes, just, I have a, I have a few questions. First, Mr. Mayor, thank you for, for asking that. I think you'd be surprised how many students, even though they might know about, about Northern Essex, like, they wait until the last day, or, you know, something happens, and I feel like a lot of stu, and then because they're not going through that process, they get lost, you know, come January or February to apply again. One of the things that, you know, I, you know, it might be controversial, but I would love to see is tying the diploma to submitting some type of college application, you know, just to say that they applied somewhere, whether that, you know, whether that's Northern Essex or any other school, just so that we know that they're actually going somewhere. My, before I ask a question, I just want to give you kudos, and also Superintendent Lane Glenn, because I'm, one of my, my big issues is this issue about dual enrollment. I think we're doing a lot to, to make sure that kids don't fall through the gaps, but there are some students that are exceptional, and I think we got to do a lot more. You know, my cousin, he told me the other day that, you know, you know, I'm always hard on him, but he was like, oh, Pavel, like, you know, I'm doing well. Next year, I think I only have to take, I think I only have to take a one class or two classes. I, I don't know the deal, but everything else is elective. So, I'm seeing, you know, this kid who sometimes gets bored in class, because he's pretty smart, and is there anything else that we can do to sort out, you know, so he can step up his game? And I think that a dual enrollment program would be great. I mean, imagine if we're able to put that into the high school, so when they graduate from their senior year, they have a year, year and a half's worth of credits already in the bag, whether they're going to Northern Essex or they're going to any other school. So, I just want to, every time I, you know, I speak to either of you, I always say that, so, since we're on the subject, I wanted to pull forward that again. I hope that we work on that. I know, Lane Glenn said that there's been some talks already, and, you know, whatever we can do to try to get, get these discussions to move forward, I, I think would be great. I have a question for you, Mr. Fiatto. You were talking about, about sort of like tracking of students that go to college. Was that students that say that they're thinking of going to school, or there, there is some type of confirmation that they, they have enrolled?
What we do is exit interviews with, surveys with high school seniors on their last week of school, as, before graduation, and they check out with our- last week of school as, before graduation and they check out with our guidance counselors and they indicate, and the guidance counselors confirm that they look at acceptance letters and they, they see where the students have been accepted and where they've make, where they're making their commitment to go to school based on the senior survey. Uh, we're, we're, we have a partner on our campus called Gear Up. Many of you know about Gear Up. They, we're working with the, um, higher, the Department of Higher Education to come up with some tracking software and they're working, we should have some really good information, uh, on all of our Gear Up students. Ninety percent of our students on campus are Gear Up, have qualified for Gear Up, so we're getting more and more students on campus to be, to sign up for Gear Up. With that, with that application process comes a variety of benefits to be a Gear Up member included in, uh, in, 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 in that database, uh, so that we can track their whereabouts and determine if they're persisting in college.
And that's really important for us because, uh, as you know, kids go to many different universities or colleges, community colleges, and to have that kind of software to track kids is the data you want, it's also the data we want, uh, because it's very hard to kind of go one-off for every kid and call the university, 'cause a lot of times they don't wanna give you that information. But if you can get them in the system where they sign the release and you can actually track them, then the data becomes available and that's obviously advantageous for us.
Yeah, that would be great, 'cause to me that's like my MCAS. You know, uh, even if a kid gets advanced, but he ends up failing out of, uh, UMass Amherst or whatever the school might be, I, I feel it like not just that school failed, but we as a system failed. Um, I have, is it okay? I just have? Yeah. A few comments around, this is not on this subject, but regarding MCAS in general, and we were talking about that before, this, uh, I think one of the things that happens is that we concentrate so hard on, um, trying to be level one that sometimes we miss out on certain things. And throughout the discussions that, uh, Mr. Rodriguez and I have been having with a, a few of the principals throughout the school, one of the concerns that I had was that in some schools they've, um, they've cut Algebra One and Algebra Two from, from their program. Um, and I remember I, I asked one of the principals, 'cause I remember, you know, being in eighth grade, taking Algebra One and then, uh, at the high school level being, going directly to Algebra Two, and, you know, I asked why and essentially it was, you know, there's only so much time and that they were gonna, uh, use that time to focus on, uh, MCAS. And that was a, you know, a concern to my, to me. Um, another thing that we found, I forget what, if it was with the Weatherby, um, but they, the way that they integrate science into the school system is very different from a lot of the other schools. And what they've said is because they've done that, that they were able to increase their, their science MCAS scores and that's one of the reasons that they say that they're a level-one school. And, uh, you know, I'm thinking if they're doing that, why aren't other schools doing something similar to that? I know a lot of schools use groundworks and they use the science kits, but, you know, I'm, I'm not essentially sure if that's as, um...
Robust?
Yeah, as what the Weatherby, uh, is doing. So I just wanted to put both of those comments out there. I know I've said a lot of comments, but...
Well, I, two things. One, you know, it's obviously concerning for me to hear that about the Algebra One. Uh, when I was an academic superintendent in charge of all the middle schools in K-8s in Boston, I actually spearheaded the effort to get algebra into our eighth graders. And so we went from, I think, five percent to over thirty percent of our kids were taking algebra in eighth grade because we know that puts them on the path to calculus and to higher math. So that is not something, uh, we're trying to do away with and we're gonna have to work with whatever principals feel that way because algebra is, uh, you know, I understand what happens and if you look at the eighth-grade MCAS, algebra is only twenty percent of the test. And so some people historically have been afraid to give the algebra section because they're gonna say, well, I'll take my algebra kids, but then they won't do as well on MCAS. And that typically actually doesn't happen because those kids are often more advanced anyway and so they're able to still do well on the MCAS. So that kind of thinking should've been outdated ten years ago.
So just follow up, so there's an algebra component to the MCAS?
Well, twenty percent of the items are algebra-based on the eighth grade, on the eighth-grade MCAS.
Okay.
Yeah, um, but so if...
Algebra One?
Algebra One, that's correct. So, uh, I, you know, this was ten years ago, I was having this fight with people, I can't believe it's coming up again. Um, so sometimes people would be afraid to offer the Algebra One 'cause they're saying, well, we're only teaching the kids twenty percent of the test, even though they're doing more advanced math. And the reality is that kids are ready for algebra, can get that twenty percent and still do well on the MCAS. So you shouldn't ever not do algebra early if kids are ready for it, particularly since we know it sets them on the course to get to calculus. So it's, um, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Static that you feel like that.
Thank you, I mean, that's something that has to be fixed right away. Um, the other thing I wanna say is, uh, you know, we have different schools doing well in different ways and, um, you know, I'm, I'm really about good instruction first and foremost, that's what I believe in, but how they get there, we're giving principals a lot of leeway on how to get there. Uh, a school like the Weatherby has been an exceptional, uh, example of what's happened here. Um, and what we find is that when good things happen, other principals during principal meetings like to share and steal things. And so I think you'll see that kind of, uh, uh, process and schedule be adopted at other schools. But it may not be for everyone. There may be other level-one schools that do a completely different schedule, um, and still get results. So, um, I'm less concerned about the structure than I am about the quality of instruction, uh, but I think you should, uh, sleep well knowing that typically when schools really do well, people are banging down their door and trying to copy and steal what they've done. And we've seen, I think we've seen that already at the Weatherby, Sleet, Frost and, you know, different places.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Well, um, going on the same thought, uh, basically, uh, what I have found throughout many meetings that I have had with our principals is that, um, basically seeing the same, looking, looking at the same thought of Algebra One, Algebra Two and going to high school and have the lack of algebra once they get there, we find that once they are in fourth grade, they don't have enough science to go to fifth grade and then in fifth grade they get tested and they kinda like, you know, uh, they, they have to push many, many hours of science in fifth grade because they're gonna get tested. But the thing is, that's a little bit of an issue there, but the, the main issue is that once they, the kids start seeing science more often in third, fourth grade, they make a life cho, a, a, a life decision during those grades because they can become an engineer, they can become, um, something related to science. And if we look at the future of, uh, of the whole world, things are gonna be related to science somehow, some way. And basically we, we are not somehow not providing enough science in, in third and fourth grade to kids and, and it's, I feel like it's, it's a lot, it's like, uh, we're not providing that opportunity to the kids to make that life choice, uh, at the early age and, uh, and, and, and then once they get to fifth grade and then they have a problem with the MCAS as well. Uh, and that's kinda like, you know, uh, it's kinda difficult to see, but it's, it's, it's some, somehow is, is part of our reality.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's an excellent point. I think what you've seen is that people have narrowed their curriculum and their focus to just math and English across the state, uh, because of the MCAS test.
Yes.
Um, now that the science test is part of the graduation requirement, people paying it more attention, but still not as much as English and math. We, as a district, moved to an expanded learning day, a longer school day, so that we could make sure that we add those things back in because we couldn't, uh, many, many other districts in the state are giving, not giving the attention that's needed, not just to science, but also to history, right? I mean, there's just, there's not enough time during the day and people are focusing so much on math and English. We are fortunate that we have a longer day in the K-8 space where people have been adding back science and you've seen that reflected in our test scores, which have gone significantly up in science. With that said, we are not where we need to be. We've got a long, we've got a lot of work to do, we've gotta work with our principals and make sure that we're really having a top-notch science, uh, option for our kids. Uh, because science, by the way, is the most fun subject in, in my opinion, Mr. Fiatto. Um, it should be the most, the, 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 you know, the, a really exciting subject for kids, right? So, and to take that away from kids is not something we wanna do. We wanna actually bring more of that back.
Yeah. So before I give Mrs. Mariano a second, I just wanna say that I think what we're hearing here is that the frustration of what the curriculum looks like bumping up against the fact that we have to prepare kids for the test and that test, teaching to the test debate and philosophy that's going on. And I, I just always like to bring the, the facts to the table. The state mandates the tests, the state guides us by the tests and we have to be more, and I think this is the cool part, that the staff and, and, and the superintendent are trying to be more nimble around teaching to the test at the same time, preparing them more aggressively for everything else that's gonna come at them at the same time. Mrs. Mariano?
Um, I just wanna step back a, a little bit to the MCAS and particularly at the high school. The student growth at, particularly English Language Arts, kind of dipped a little bit this year. As we're reimagining the high school and what the high school's going to look at, will we, will we, I see the middle school, there are kids coming up from the middle school probably in, from level-one schools that are scoring very, very well. What is the plan or maybe this is, I'm ahead of myself, maybe this is in what your plan should be, Mike, as far as connecting the middle schools with the high school and making that transition a little bit smoother? Um, it's, it's, it's strange to see, you know, the dip in the growth there where the middle schools, the growth is higher. Um, you know, what's the explanation there between the middle school and the high school? I know it's a big, it's a big transition and a change and is it curriculum? Is it, um, the transition being in the high school from the middle school? I don't know what it is, but I hope that maybe that's addressed as we reimagine what that high school should look like.
I, and I think that's what, uh, Mr. Fiatto and his team are in the process of doing is, uh, really focusing on how do we have, uh, a more structured environment when kids come in, knowing that we're gonna have hundreds more kids that are scoring proficient or advanced coming through the eighth grade. How do we keep them aggressively challenged and what does that curriculum instruction look like? So, uh, you know, obviously I think the cart's a little bit ahead of the horse on this one, but I think Mr. Fiatto and I will be coming back, uh, to folks with kind of a plan for how to improve that.
Thank you.
Mr. Poianno?
Um, is, is it possible that in, you know, two months, three months, whatever it might be, that the, the district can come back and sort of give us, uh, um, you know, as far as this dual enrollment or whether, you know, how we, 'cause right now, I mean, kids can take credits at Northern Essex. I don't think it's really being used, you know, as it should be, um, or we could probably put more students to go into it. Um, so I'd be interested to know, like, you know, how we're doing now and what the plan is for the future.
Yeah, I think, uh, that's something we could definitely get on the agenda, probably in the new year, probably January, February. Um, we'd like to come back and talk about the plan for the high school at the next meeting or two and then really start, uh, focusing on some of those aspects. And I'd also like to ask Lane Glenn to come.
Yeah, that'd be great.
He's been a great supporter for Lawrence, uh, you know, they've really put a footprint down here in the city and, um, I think you guys have questions that only he can answer.
Yeah, the, the only thing that I'll add to that, Mr. Poianno, is that I think in this dual enrollment conversations, I think people, 'cause it's, Northern Essex is a state ca, a state institution and the school system is a public institution, there is a financial situation and I think that's been the biggest stumbling block, um, because somebody has to pay for the credits.
So you'd be surprised. I mean, there, there's, there's money for, for the students to go to, to Northern Essex. It's just that from, from what I hear from, I mean, I hear like different accounts, from Northern Essex, this is the problem, it's like, it's hard finding students that can, uh, qualify for it or as far as, you know, getting the grades for it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know that, you know, my cousin went to speak to the guidance counselor and she had said that so far he's been, been the only person that has talked to her, um, about it, not doing enrollment, but like taking, uh, classes at Northern Essex. So I think that there's, it probably is not something that, you know, a hundred students can do, but I think, you know, ten, fifteen or something like that. Um, and, uh, just, uh, my last question regarding this is, you know, I mentioned, you know, and you smiled around, um, tying your diploma to submitting a college application.
Yes.
Or something like that. Just wanted to hear your thoughts.
I wanna, yes, I wanna hear it.
Uh, so what I would say is, um, while the superintendent is directionally supportive of this endeavor, I wanna kinda talk to the principals and make sure they're okay with it, but, uh, it's something that I think would make some sense to us. I mean, if, we've gotta look at the capacity, um, to make sure that we can help our kids apply, uh, but I think it's, it would be a great, uh, opportunity.
I'll volunteer.
Mr. Rodriguez?
This is on tape, we got that.
Oh, by the way, um, the college applications, college applications sometimes is one thing, but there is a student that fell down because they didn't fill out their financial aid application and that's another issue. So I was wondering, like, uh, can we put those two together as a requirement?
Well, I, I think what we're hearing is, um, perhaps things that the school committee might want to see in Mr. Fiatto's plan, uh, that's gonna be developed.
We talked one time about that.
But even further than that, Mr. Superintendent, I think one, one of the things that is important in this conversation is what you guys are doing now. As you think about that, I, I don't know, um, how many parent, um, workshops you guys have for financial aid, I'm sure it's happening, workshops for, um, applications and what the guidance, I mean, that would be a nice report to have that's separate and apart from the future visioning, so that we can have a li, a little bit of sense of, um, that at the ver, that the basic is happening, that, you know, kids do have, even though they may not be doing the application, they have access to the applications, they're being talked to about the applications. What's the, what's the primer for students leading up to those things? And I just don't know, we have enough information and, and frankly, we get so much anecdotal information and we tell you, all you need is one person to have a bad experience for that to become the...
Right.
What people feel that is actually happening. Um, and, and so I wanna make sure that you can, can we get some of that sooner than, than January? 'Cause I think it'd be helpful. Again, it's just a rundown of the things you do to prep kids for, for college.
We can probably do something before Thanksgiving, have a report to you guys, even by next week.
For the December, for, well, we can have it before then, but we can just go over in the December meeting.
Sure. There's several touchpoints that a student has throughout their four years and, uh, I can outline some of the things that we're doing around financial aid and college, right, college and career readiness.
I, I've just found out in my last eleven months, Mr. Mayor, that we ask stuff from the staff and they're, oh, we're doing that. But you're not doing it in a way that people know and then maybe you're just falling down on the marketing so that people, the kids in the building know. Um, and so that, you know, we, we're doing stuff that citizens just don't know we do and they were just, they're like, well, nobody asked for it. Well, no one knows that you're doing it, so no one's gonna ask for it. So I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ortiz?
Going back to the, the idea to track college success or college applications or, um, just seeing, you know, them going through, is that something that a Merrimack College fellow could do? 'Cause I know that you have some Merrimack College fellows there, correct?
Yes, I, I'm just not sure the legalities around tracking and the software that, that when students, students have to, I'm imagining students have to agree to enter into the, where, into the pool of students upon their graduation.
I'm just posing or brainstorming, wouldn't that be, so that would be part and parcel to their, so it's not adding money?
It would definitely be nice to have additional staff to, to, to fulfill those types of things as, uh, as guidance counselors and administrators and teachers are tied to a lot of other responsibilities.
Doing their thing, exactly. So am I wrong in saying that, that you do have Merrimack College fellows there?
We do.
Okay.
Um, what I think we can do is look at it, what we currently, what Gear Up can currently provide and see if we could, instead of replicating the, duplicating the process, see what they currently invited, to provide and then how we could add to that, 'cause there will be a gap between the students who are in Gear Up with those students who are not Gear Up.
Right.
Students to make sure that we can capture a hundred percent of the students that, um, attend two- to four-year schools.
Yeah, 'cause my thought process was just not to have to tax any of the administrators or the teachers that are presently already working at capacity. Um, where else could we have hands? And that just came to mind. I remember that Merrimack College is very, um, embedded in our high school, so that So that might be a part of their.
It's a great idea.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Uh, any final thoughts, Mr. Mayor, before moving to public participation?
Anybody have anything new?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms., Ms. Mariano, Mrs. Mariano and then Mr. Blackford.
Thank you.
In light of, um, the recent tragedy, um, of the young lady at the railroad, in talking to people, I, I became aware of something that I, living in Lawrence my whole entire life, I never knew. That children and young, young adults hang out at the railroad yards and the tracks. And there's more activity there than the average citizen really knows. And, um, I, I gave it a lot of thought, you know, spending time at the Frost. And I, I just can't get out of my head the, you know, the sorrow in the eyes of those kids. So I found online this program called Operation Lifesaver. And it's a program, um, instructing people, including students K to twelve, on how to be safe around the railroads. And, um, I sent the information to Jeff and, um, I'd like the members of this committee to, um, take a peek at it. There's age appropriate lessons at each grade level. And, um, they're not labor intensive, they're very short lessons. They kind of increase the awareness. You live in a community where the railroad passes through your community and how should you be safe? And what should you be looking out for? If you can Google Operation Lifesaver, um, and it's, and it's, to me, I, I believe it's a great program and something that the district should look into and maybe offer to the kids.
Yeah, we appreciate that, Mrs. Mariano. We're gonna send the information you sent to me out to all the different principals and let them evaluate, um, where and when, how to use it. But I think, I looked at it and as you said, I think it's short, but it's, it's pretty quality material. And anything that could prevent this kind of tragedy from happening again is something that I think we can all stand behind.
Thank you, Mr. Blackford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just want to commend the, the administration on the work they've done. In light of the multiple tragedies that we've had, um, especially with the younger students. Your staff has done an amazing job at, at not only getting the information out to the community, but, but really trying to console the families from what I've seen. So thank you for that. The question I had was based off of the earlier conversation, um, just quickly. One of the things that I've noticed when it comes to just schools operating in the city compared to Lawrence Public Schools, they have guidance counselors. In comparison to like the amount of guidance counselors we have per student, they have a lot small. So they have like one to twelve as opposed to our guidance counselors is one to like one building.
Right.
So we, as Mr. Fiatto said, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's just we need more guidance counselors sometimes when it comes to, especially for college education and getting these kids wrapped up. So my thought, I guess, would be, since there is a, there's a time that is, this is when you need to do these things. Is there a way to get, I don't know, part-time guidance counselors in on those time, those time periods? And say, hey, college students that are almost graduating, come back to Lawrence, work for three weeks to get these kids college applications, finance, all that stuff in, uh, internship program or apprentice program or something along those lines?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's pretty perceptive. I, I, you know, I obviously would like to see more full-time guidance counselors. But, uh, the idea that we have a busy season in the spring is, and the winter, actually starts in the winter.
Yeah.
You know, to get our kids through the application process. And then once they're accepted through the financial aid process, I mean, it would be great to be able to, uh, bring in additional resources. And I think it's something that, uh, we, not just at the high school, but we as kind of a district need to look at, within our budget to see what and how we can get some of that done. And I would expect, although, uh, again, Mr. Fiatto's leading the charge. But I, you know, I, I would suspect that, um, you will see some of that in his, um, kind of plan that he's gonna put forth in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Um, and one, one quick final, um, uh, the conversation around space and growing populations or anything like that, is that what's the process on that currently?
Uh, Seth, do you wanna, is Seth here? Do you wanna come up and talk?
Thank you. So we continue to look at, um, growing enrollment and are in the process of trying to finalize enrollment projections. Uh, we're going back to approximately nineteen ninety-four to look at enrollment, um, in the district by neighborhood, by school and how that's changed, uh, and how that's going to, um, what's it gonna look like over the next five years? Um, at the same time, we are just, uh, closed today in RFQ, Request for Qualifications, for a firm to come in to take a look at our buildings and to look at both, um, what repairs need to be, uh, upgraded in all of our buildings, but as well as starting to think, reconfigure maybe space. And whether that means grade reconfigurations or how do we start to open up space in neighborhoods that have, um, or that we anticipate growing enrollment. So there'll be more to come over the next couple of months with that, um, but that's what's happened in the last month.
Thank you.
And I think, uh, this is something we've talked to you guys about, that we're gonna be updating you fairly frequently. So, um, it, it's something that Bear is looking at, uh, the space issue and the growing enrollment is, um, I think not a blip or a bubble, but I think it's a actual trend and we need to start thinking very seriously about this. So I appreciate the question.
Uh, just on that point, um, I, I think it was pretty telling that when the Secretary of Education came and the commissioner came and they saw the elevator waiting room essentially that was turned into a classroom. I think that.
Yeah.
Even they were quite shocked by that and how, how utilizing we are of our space that we have.
Uh, we have creative folks here in the district. But, um, uh, the creativity, I think, only has so much of a run before we actually have to make some changes to make sure that we have the right size, uh, and the right number of buildings for our children.
Thank you.
Just one last, we, we've mentioned Mr. Fiatto a lot and I think it'd probably be an important point to say, um, he actually joined the, the Workforce Investment Board and, uh, to try to tie the, the needs of the workforce to some of the stuff that's going on in the high school. So I want to thank him for, for, um, agreeing to be on that board. Is there anything further?
Mr. Mayor? Just one announcement before we adjourn. Next Tuesday night, um, the President's Council Meeting that's going to be held here, we're on the agenda to present, um, that PowerPoint to the, um, PTO officers. So it's just a reminder that, um, we will be here Tuesday night.
What time is that at?
I believe it's six thirty, six or six thirty. It's on the poster when we leave right out here.
Six thirty PM?
Six, oh, six.
I think it's six PM.
And it's the PTO presidents and officers?
Right.
All right, cool. Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, so one final thing before moving to public participation. I've asked Joan to pass around to you, um, just more high school information. I believe you have the first page, which we emailed, which shows kind of the, um, dates for teacher meetings and focus groups and things like that. On the second page, I believe, is the comments that we received from the Student Advisory Group. This is a group that we hope to continue to reconvene. And if folks had time, we would set up a time when you guys could talk to them as well. Uh, and we will provide more information to you, uh, on possible dates for the coming. And then you see some data on the high school compared to the K to eight and some other things in there. But it's, it's something that you can have now and, and if folks have questions about it, we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Great, thanks.
With that said, uh, we have one person for public participation tonight. Mr. Molly, are you here?
Yes, sir. Good evening, honorable members. Sad news of the passing away our beloved child, Janira Fuentes, at the Robert Frost, made eighty-three thousand citizens sad. Jahira, we love you and we feel your pain. And we demand of our Massachusetts legislator compel MBTA impose more security and safety in the name of beloved Janira Fuentes. We, the citizen, in this important month of Thanksgiving, offering the best thanks for the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh for helping our public school. We, the citizen, are grateful now for more level one school, more higher school graduate, more MCAS improvement. We are thankful to our teachers and their union. Eighty-three thousand citizens are behind you and your wonderful union. This Thanksgiving is special because of success of turnaround plan. Our children, our graduate, becoming the best public school and education in our future. Now Lawrence Public is, the school is the best example of a success and the best city. And the city of the immigrant has risen up. With the best Thanksgiving wishes for our teachers and the leadership of the Honorable Superintendent Raleigh, happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molly. Mr. Mayor, if you would adjourn the meeting for us?
More motions to adjourn?
Second.
May second, it all is in favor? Aye. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you all and good night.